5G, of course, is more alarming about what they already have in Pippa Keel. And concerned that, you know, that's county's land that was leased out in perpetuity, which is scary because, you know, how do we monitor that? Or because it's in perpetuity, so that lease is there and they're just building whatever they want to build. And a lot of times they try to stay under the 200 feet because as soon as you hit 200 feet or more, then FCC gets involved. But when you're below that, they're not involved. It's supposed to be our, the PUC here. But then when we check, the PUC is really not monitoring it. So, so, you know, nobody's monitoring anything and they're just doing whatever they want and the county is saying, "We cannot do anything about it because that is leased land in perpetuity." So we're trying to find out from, the last time I had a meeting with the mayor's office is corp counsel is going to look into, you know, things that they may not have been in compliance with, with the lease is the only way that we could probably look at that lease and maybe kind of pull back on it or whatever. So I understand the public's outcry because a couple of them who testified, like I said, were from Pippa Keel. We had a meeting in Pippa Keel and a lot of people came out. And, and what is, you know, when people say, "Oh, it's not, it's not going to affect your health and we just fear mongering and it's like, it's not science, you guys are putting all this." However, if there was a health study to be done in Pippa Keel and the amount of people with cancer and have died from cancer, even a young girl, the father came to one of the meetings and it threw me back because I know how it feels to lose a child. He threw his daughter's ponytail on the table in front of us all as all he get left of her because she died from cancer too. Older people who are struggling with cancer came to that meeting. They say the vibes in their home, the vibrations, the sound, you know, we have all this testimony, but nobody wants to consider that as scientific facts, but it's human, human facts. We're getting it from, directly from the people's voices and, and their experiences and their families and people who have died in that community. So I understand where you're coming to when you're talking and those probably are not 5G, I hope. But, so Matt bringing this up on 5G, definitely, we should definitely not allow that on our island or in our state until studies can be made. I, I agree with that totally, wholeheartedly. And with that said, I would also like to start investigating, maybe that's what you could have put in there, investigating what already exists and is our PUC monitoring any of them? Because a lot of them are staying under 200 feet, so FCC does not regulate. So I drive by going to KTA and I look on the side by the service station and I see this huge cell towers and I'm going, "Holy," I don't want to say the bad word, but it's crazy, the amount of that, that. And we talk about the, the health risk. We're allowing all this without even studying the health risks, yet if you look at people dying and that may be connected to that, it's, we gotta somehow prioritize it. And so for the county, and I know you're, you have to follow whatever our rules and the laws and everything says, but I know for a fact, we had leased land that is full of cell towers. I don't know how we can address that or what loopholes or whatever went on. One thing I know for sure is we should never do a lease in perpetuity, period. That is ridiculous and I don't know even how that even passed at that moment. But, so I'm concerned. Thank you for bringing it up on 5G. I don't support it, but I also don't support all these buildings of any cell towers until we start looking at the health risks because we haven't and we just keep piling it on. So, I'm sorry, I just kind of went over and beyond.
You're fine, Ms. Point Dexter.
Thank you, Chair, I yield at this time.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Richards?
Thank you, Chair. Interesting conversation. And Michael, under the, as you understand it, under the FCC, isn't there federal law that mandates they have jurisdiction over all of the communication? Do I understand that correctly? Maybe that's a question for Joe as well.
Punt to Joe.
Yes.
That was a long, long.
You could answer that one.
I don't disagree with the concern for health and well-being as we go forward because that's what we're all sitting here for. This has been a circling, or a circling conversation for quite some time and also the FCC guidelines, obviously, they need to be updated. I think government doesn't move very quickly and we all sitting up here realize that quite well, but nonetheless, that 96 date is quite outdated. I don't disagree with that. Everything that I have looked into conversations, if we're going to talk about radio frequency concerns, it's not for one, it's for all. And trying to figure out what the best way to go forward with this, I don't think there's anybody up here in the council that doesn't have a cellphone. And so we all accept the risk of having this because this, this is emitting it right now. My concern is when we see, you know, like for instance, the wireless earbuds and things like that, those are all emitting radio frequencies that are potentially concerning. And comes down for me, the risk benefit of what we're talking about here. Now, last week, we just had a conversation about our cows and I got all excited about that because anytime we talk about cows, but in this situation, we were talking about the cellular on wheels. And going back and forth with the balancing, we have communities that do not have connectivity. And we saw the desperate need, especially in this pandemic, of having that connectivity. And I like the fact of fiber optics, that's, that's a great, except the infrastructure cost and the timeline to get that in is excessive. It takes a long time and to actually get that done. This is something sitting on the National Association of Counties Executive Board, connectivity for our counties as a whole is huge. We talk about the urban centers and they're connected, but we get out to the country and that's where we have a lot of problems. And it's because it's the miles of distance that we are going to have to install cable or fiber optic, wherever the case may be, and the relatively low number of people on those, so how do we get that done? Wireless has connected us for a lot of different things. Now, like, again, I don't discount the concern for anything that we do going forward, but then we have the risk benefit of what we're looking. How do we balance that as a whole? And Val, you know, you make a comment about seeing all these cell towers. It's interesting, the closer you get to anything emitting this radio frequency emissions, it becomes more concerning, but, but we, we have accepted it with the cell phones. How do we go forward? Do we go retroactively? Would people be, this poses a real interesting question for us as a community as a whole because what is acceptable and what is not acceptable as far as acceptable risk? We all accept the risk of driving a car. And the connectivity that we need as a community as a whole is huge. During the emergencies, being able to communicate to people is critical and having the infrastructure to do that. That's why we're talking about using this COVID-19 money to install more cell towers and abilities, what we're talking about, 40 cows to, to deploy. So now, how do we pick this as a legislative body and how do we evaluate the risk benefit? And I think I'm enjoying this conversation. I like the real quick answer that Joe gives, it's not, this is not, this is an FCC call, but when we talk about 5G, we talk about 4G. I've looked into it, can anybody explain the difference between 5G and 4G, both technically and just in the lay terms? I don't think anybody really up here in the council has the credentials that articulate the differences. And, Chair, I'm going to yield right now because very interesting conversation.
Okay, and I'm going to throw us into another recess. We need to just kickstart the system again so that we can bring our closed captioning back. We're in recess.
We have reconvened planning committee at 3:15. All right, at this point, Councilmember Richards, you have just yielded the floor. Anybody else with questions or comments on this resolution before us?
Chair Kirkwood?
Yes.
This is Miley.
Hi, Ms. David, go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Oh geez, great, great information. Is, is our counsel, Mr. Kamala Mela, yes, I see you there. Okay, I'm curious about what Councilmember Kani Ali Kleinfelder spoke of with regard to the federal statute, the Telecommunication Act. And generally, I'm, I'm looking at what he referred to. And that in, in that subsection B, it basically says that the, nothing in this section shall affect the ability of a state to impose, on a neutral and consistent basis, requirements necessary to preserve and advance the service and also protect public safety and welfare. And also, it goes on to say that nothing in that section would affect the authority of a state or local government. And I think local government brings it down to our county level to manage the public rights of way. And it says, "Or require fair and reasonable compensation from the telecommunications or communications providers." But man, in managing, Mr. Kamala Mela, managing the public rights of way, would that be a means of us to provide some restrictions or processes in order, in order to preserve and protect the welfare and public safety? I, I'm not sure, but I see that there is a, a, a method that we could, on the county level, impose some sort of process to, whether it's a process that will allow, instead of just a decision based on the director's discretion, whether that process could include input from, and also inquiries into the health and, health issues regarding this type of 5G. Is that, is that something that we could actually implement on the county level from a legal?
Okay, this is Joe, this is Joe Kamala Mela. I'll, I just want to say that when we talk about the RF exposure limits, you know, it's pretty set. So that's something that we cannot change because, because that's part of the law that, that we face with. So one of the mechanisms that we're using, when we go and try to make an agreement, or when we do make an agreement, is, is the idea of what can we do to ensure safety? And, and, and sort of thought that came out, because I talked to one of our deputies, Daddy Patel, was to, when they install, you know, have them test. And then based on the tests, you know, would it give us some idea as to whether there's a, an undue health concern at that moment? So that's something that, that we're pushing, you know, right now with the, you know, one of the companies that we're dealing with right now. Does that help at all?
Well, I was thinking more along the lines of, you just mentioned that after installation, then, then the process, some kind of process could be generated, but I'm thinking more along the lines before. I know you said it can't be, we can't, this is a federal issue and, and they have the right, but in managing our rights of way, I, I, I'm looking more for something prior to installation.
Yeah, so, so I know that we have, you know, certain zoning requirements and, and certain laws that we look at because, you know, certain kind of things, we, we look at issues like, you know, is, is there one environmental concern, is that something that we can look at? So, so we, we look at those kind of things plus whatever laws we have in our zoning code or in our zoning rules that allows us to set certain kinds of conditions, you know? And, and so each site may, may be different because in, in some of the county sites, we do have towers. So, so there's other issues that come into play when, when we deal with towers. Because sometimes on, on our towers, we, we have seal defense, telecommunication there and then, you know, we want to make sure that that doesn't get interfered with.
Right, but all those, all those things, all those towers, if it falls within a county right of way, is there a process before we even decide, or we even decide to allow that to be placed in a public right of way? Similar to how DPW has to have a declaration of clearance before they even do a roadway repaving project, that they have to certify or declare that there is no environmental issues or, like an EA is not necessary? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so there is a, there's a, there's a process, but I, but I forgot, forgot what the, what the timing mechanism is because there's a shot clock usually that's involved. Once, once, once they make an application, you know, we have, I don't know, is it 30, 60 days? I, I've kind of forgotten it right, you know, right now for us to respond.
There is a timeline to respond and what I'm asking is, in this telecommunication application that came forward at our prior meeting, were they already at that point, did they already accept it as a, as a, as something to move forward with? Has, has BPW actually gone through their process of determining whether placement would be adequate?
Yeah, so, yeah, so, so, so the department that we work with, you know, we, we would, you know, get comments from them, you know, to make sure that, you know, that there's, because they're trying to follow laws that exist now because the FCC has an order, you know, there's certain things that we cannot do. And.
I think that's what we're trying to find out.
Yeah.
You say there's, there are things that we cannot do by law and I'm just trying to figure out if there's something in the management of the public right of way where they want to put this proposed 5G power or whatever it's called, in our right of way. Does that allow, according to this act, allow us to actually have some sort of say or some sort of screening process before that, that happens?
Yeah, so there is a, there is a process that, and I think planning is involved, is, is planning involved in that process?
On the small cell?
Yes, small cell.
Not really.
Okay, so it's, it's just the bigger towers that we're talking about is when planning law. So then, a lot then falls with the public works.
Okay, you know what? I'm going, I'm going to yield for now and I'll try to see if I can further into this. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Ms. David. Anybody else in corner?
Yes, please.
Go ahead, Ms. Viegas.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt, for bringing this to the next level. You know, it's something that we kind of caught inadvertently and something else that came before us on council, but it's something that since being elected and being in this position has been constantly on the hearts and minds and lips of the people on this island. I constantly receive emails, phone calls, Facebook messages from people very, very concerned. Some are already convinced that we have 5G technology on the island, to which from my research, I'm happy to report from what I know and what has been reported. We do not, we probably have the infrastructure capabilities to transition to 5G. However, that's kind of what we're looking at right now, in my understanding, is essentially we're, this resolution, Matt, if my understanding is correct, is to say to the County of Hawaii Administration, going forward, we do not want to be putting in infrastructure in the capacity that then turns our communications infrastructure into potential 5G. We have 4, 4G right now and as a number of our testifiers presented, even those that live in very rural, off the grid places are able to use a hotspot to utilize. We also have, you know, in the CARES Act presentation, I know Riley presented some really exciting information about mobile units that would bring the access to internet technologies to more rural communities and kind of create a hub of services. I was just, you know, looking at some of the information I have here and as we talk about the legality of approving or denying this, I found that New York, Boston, Seattle and Portland are currently filing lawsuits against the FCC. This is four other major cities, metropolitan areas, that have gathered the courage, found the insight and are following through with protecting their people. The potential for serious harm is massive with 5G technology. Actually, I'm reading here from the Environmental Health Trust that the radiation from small cell towers is not small. Sometimes we think that 5G will add on to, or I'm sorry, that would just replace 4G and 3G, but it doesn't, it adds on. We're adding that much larger and higher frequencies and submillimeter and millimeter waves in order to transmit data super fast. One of the other things I found really interesting is that the purpose, 5G is not really about moving faster. It refers to fifth generation wireless technology intended to provide higher capacity transmissions to carry the massive data load generated by the Internet of Things, acronym IoT, known as robotics and smart cities and artificial intelligence and driverless cars and other machine-to-machine connections. Reading through all of this information, which is very, very easy to get access to, I'm seriously concerned, I'm very grateful for Mr. Kani Ali bringing this forward, I would encourage our corp counsel to be courageous with the potential of a lawsuit by us saying no to the FCC and standing alongside some of these other large metropolitan areas who are challenging the status quo. The cumulative radiation exposure serious, it really poses serious public health risks. There are peer-reviewed published science that indicates that exposure to wireless radiation can increase cancer risks, alter brain development and damage sperm. Wireless technology was never tested for long-term safety and children are more vulnerable and cumulative exposure shows harm. I would, you know, yeah, I have a cellphone right here, but I make that decision if I'm going to be exposed to the radiation from this cellphone. Essentially, 5G is created to eventually place small cell towers, like was spoken about before, to essentially lay a whole grid work over, ideally, the planet, right? I mean, that's what many different ideas are, but then you have no choice about what you're being exposed to. And I don't know about you guys, but I don't feel that we're right in this, we're ready, especially in this day and age and these circumstances, to be putting in technology for driverless cars. We're still, you know, working on getting ourselves energy self-sufficient and transitioning to green energy, which brings me to another fact about 5G, is the amount of energy that it consumes. One of the statistics here is that 5G will vastly increase energy consumption and is incompatible with Hawaii's energy goals. Wireless energy consumption is growing at an unsustainable rate, approaching 5% to 10% of the world's electricity supply, with the biggest culprits being data centers and most significantly, wireless access networks. I think that the evidence speaks for itself, there are, I mean, I could go on and on. I guess I'll just finish with this. Is that 5G frequencies are also used as weapons. Millimeter frequencies have the capacity to cause a severe burning sensation to the skin and are used by the U.S. Department of Defense in crowd control guns called active denial systems. Just the fact that that is so closely tied with weapons technology concerns me and it behooves us to take pause and to really consider, as we are already being caused by external forces and circumstances, to take a pause, to reevaluate, to recalibrate and reconsider how we want Hawaii County to communicate with one another in our technologies, what kind of resources we're going to rely on and how we're going to come together to solve the challenges we're facing. And I don't think that 5G is a solution for any of those challenges right now. And with that, I yield.
Thank you, Ms. Viegas. Anyone else?
Just want to, I just want to quickly say that, thank you, Madam Chair, by the way. You know, Councilmember Richards says, said that we don't know the difference between 4G and 5G, so I went to Google it. And, you know, it, what scared me, it says, "The 4G networks use frequencies below 6 gigahertz, but 5G uses extremely high frequencies in the 30 gigahertz to 300 gigahertz range." So if we're using this technology now and we choose to, I would be afraid if this was a 5G because of the type of frequency. Would I have a phone? And then. And then, you know, I said this over and over before, that when is enough enough? You know, we keep building to things and trying to, you know, get a better reception. What happened to the days when it was just a telephone? Life was so simple then. We weren't as busy because now this rings off the hook. You know, and twenty-four-seven sometime we're working because of it. But with the phone before, and when we never had this, life was so much simpler. And we did things. We could talk to each other. You know, right now, a lot of times we're texting and there's no, I mean, we're just destroying society. When you look at the kids, the young kids now always on the phone or computer, I mean, it's crazy. So when is enough enough? You know, I think, I think we've reached that limit, and we're saying in Hawaii, we don't need more. We don't need more. What we need to do more is concentrate on food sustainability, building our economy, all of that kind of stuff, and going back to how we used to live and talk to each other and be a family. So, anyway, so, yeah, thanks, Matt, and I'll yield. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Poindexter. Mr. Richards, is your light on?
Yeah, it is. Well, I got to respond to that, so explain the difference.
Difference is...
No, 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 what does it mean?
The frequency, okay. If this, sometimes, when I used to wear that earpiece, it gave me major headaches.
No, but explain the difference in the science. Why does it matter?
Okay, wait.
So...
Madam Chairman, just point of order, I think he's kind of getting off.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, let's stick to the subject matter at hand, and it has to do with 5G and ceasing deployment in Hawaii County. Joe?
Yeah. I just wanted to finish answering Councilmember Miley's question because she was asking if we could do something prior, so I just found what I need to know. But under federal law, for collocations and modifications that do not result in substantial change, it requires that jurisdictions must approve the applications within sixty days or the application is deemed granted. So there's that shot clock that we do work with. So I just wanted to clarify that part. Thank you.
Ms. David, does that answer your question?
Well, yeah, it raises another question. Mr. Kamala Mela, then, where are we with respect to the time, the deadline then on this issue?
Yeah, so I just, I'm familiar only with one, so, you know, it's... So certain things got passed, so that's why now we're in the, trying to get one agreement going so that it's clear. And so we're, well, it's not already passed. That's why we had asked for a certain provision that if they install, then they should test to make sure that there's no undue safety risk that's involved.
Okay, maybe I think Public Works would answer this because then now you're advising us that there has been, there is an established timeline by which if county doesn't act or yeah, or do what they're supposed to do, approve the installation or review the plans for installation. If they do not do it in sixty days, then the application for this power is approved automatically. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I can find out where we're at at this point in time because I think when they came forward, when DPW came forward with this measure, I'll get my answer from your department then. And, yeah, I yield at this time. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. David. Any other questions, comments?
I do.
Go ahead, Ms. Eoff.
Hey, thank you. I'm not sure if this question would be, who this would be for, maybe Director E or...
Karen?
Or even Matt.
It's hard to hear you guys. Can you speak up a little bit so we can hear you better?
My question is, in this reso, you're asking that the, you're asking something of the telecommunications company to cease until we can determine if this technology would be safe. But would this also need to be directed, or would it help if it was directed to our planning director or Public Works as well? Because maybe that would give them some power to not go forward with some for a while? I'm just wondering, because of course the telecommunications company isn't going to cease if they have the right to do something, they want to do it, but we, do we have any right to hold it back by giving the, anyone in our administration that directive through a strong reso or something? I'm not sure who that question's for. It just came to mind when I reread the title of the resolution and where we're at, given what information's been given by Kamala Mela, et cetera. And Mike touched on something a little bit earlier.
And if I could, that is something we struggled with in this resolution, and we went back and forth to the LRB on, which was, you know, the purpose of this, whether we should be relaying that information to the telecommunications companies, or whether that should be relayed to our administration, and who the burden of proof should be on. And ultimately, what I found to be the heart of this matter was the citizens of our county are worried about the health concerns. The telecommunications companies are obviously watching because I'm getting emails and letters from the different lobbying groups for the telecommunications companies, saying this is going to hurt the industry. So they are watching, so I didn't feel the need to send it to them because they are very aware of what we're doing. And we are in line with many other counties, countries, and states, you know, across the world that are feeling the same way. And so this is more directed to our county administration, different departments who are involved, to urge them, like it says, that there must be some recourse for citizens when it comes to the public health concerns involved in rolling out a technology that is new. And I've had different discussions with Mike and David Yamamoto and Corporation Counsel as of our last meeting, so... Yes, we could send it, but I think right now what I'm getting is, is Joe is saying that yes, we do have a small amount of say. And Mike is saying that DPW be more suited to get this. This was originally slated for the DPW or Public Works discussion earlier today, but was moved to this committee at the request of the chairperson. And so here we are in planning. So I agree with you, yes, to DPW. Maybe we can make a floor amendment, but I don't know if that's necessary going forward. I think everyone gets a gist of what I'm doing.
Right, and I kind of agree with that too.
But if you did feel that it needed to go to David Yamamoto from Public Works?
It wasn't so much about who it's being transmitted to at the end of the reso, it was more about the directive at the title of the reso that I was just wondering about. Because it's calling upon the company itself to cease operations, right, until we can be more sure or until they can prove that there is a harm. But do we have any little say-so through the recommendations from the planning director or from the directives of the Public Works Department to cease? Or does the county, can the county council send them a message through a reso that is asking them specifically not to approve or recommend things? In 5G?
I would defer to the different departments, but I would say that our job is to, or not our job, our responsibility is to speak for the citizens who come before us. And I was, again, bombarded by phone calls, emails, in-person meetings regarding 5G technology.
Excuse me, Matt, I'm not challenging that at all. I completely understand why you wanted to bring this forward and I support it. I'm just wondering. But you're right, I mean, the message goes out, so whoever is in charge of decision-making, recommending, or even deciding to come here, we would be sending this message out all the way around, I guess, so. I don't know, there was just something that I guess I'm not articulating it exactly right, but I understand why you're doing it and that you want this message to be heard, not only by the telecommunications company, but by our own administration as well.
Okay, Mahal, okay. Sorry, I don't know if I understood your question. I'm sorry.
That's okay, yeah. I probably did not state it. It's not really clear, but anyways, great discussion and thank you for bringing this out. I mean, we, I feel one of the things that testifiers said that I really related to was we are an island. We want to be a safe place for people to live, recreate, to visit. We want to be known as a very safe place. That's why in the past I've supported legislation that banned the use of GMOs on our island, the use of heavy pesticides and that kind of farming. I mean, I feel like we can err on the side of caution every chance we get. We are a small island, but we are a very fragile place. We're not like a city, or we're not like the mainland, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't try to be like that either. I think we are in a position through not only this body, but, you know, just through the general sense of our county government to keep this island a safe and healthy place and make decisions that are going in that direction, even though it's easy to follow suit with, you know, new stuff and new technology and mainland mentality, but I think that my inclination is to agree that we want to make decisions that err on the side of caution whenever we have that opportunity. So if this is one chance, then I will support this reso.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Eoff. Any other questions or comments?
Director, you have a question for you. You know, it's, this reso is directed to you, the mayor, managing director, so I'm just curious, you know, passage of this resolution, you know, what does that mean exactly for your department?
Well, first I thought it got moved to this committee because you guys missed me. And you enjoy my responses. Aside from that, straight shooter. I think no matter how stringent, strongly worded resolution you want to make, it's still just a resolution. I'm up against, you know, federal law in having to make determinations on, let's say, cellphone towers that right now don't have 5G. So I think it'll have little effect from a planning department aspect, and as Matt has said, you know, really around the small cell, which is looking at 5G, is really around DPW, right? I want to say, though, that Joe had mentioned that the testing of things once they're implemented is certainly one way, you know, through a licensing agreement that DPW is looking at. We could also, from planning, taking, you know, some lead from them to maybe potentially condition some of our cellphone towers around some testing now that we hear that. So that's a good idea. I think even larger, this is why you invite me, I think, is we're talking about a system that is broken, when PUC ain't doing their duty. It's all about systems change. If you know me well enough, I'm always about trying to work within these systems that are broken within government. And we work within these systems that don't serve us well around climate change, DLNR, SHIPTI, you know, affordable housing, infrastructure. And we're constantly trying to figure out these priorities and try to afford it from a county perspective. Just sometimes I've realized the county can't do it all. There's no way. We don't have the resources. So we have to pick and choose what we can prioritize from the county level and what we will have to prioritize for the state to take the lead. Clearly, the state has a lot of area here for improvement. And I certainly would hope that the council walks away understanding their role in trying to organize other islands to realize that the state has to step up in their leadership on this issue and not leave it to a small county to fight the big fight with the telecommunications industry. So it is about a larger systems change, but to get systems changed, sometimes you have to nip on their heels. We have to pass these testing things, right? And that's how you get systems change. And so it won't be overnight, which people want, like, just outright say no. It may take a little longer. So again, I appreciate the conversation too, because it gives us that chance to step back, to reflect what are the small things that we can push on for systems change here. And clearly, we identified some areas. Even in the small area of planning, there are things I can look at. So I hope that's helpful.
Yeah, that's great. And you kind of ventured into territory that I wanted to get into, and that was conditions of approval. And, you know, it kind of came to my mind as Ms. David was speaking and saying, is there anything within our abilities, our process, our systems to kind of require folks that are coming forward proposing this technology to submit, you know, some kind of health impact report prior to them deploying, Joe? And so you talk about this shot clock and it activating when, you know, an application is submitted or whatever. And I'm wondering if a prerequisite, a requirement before they're able to submit is, you know, having something like this done. So I think that's something you need to look at and potentially report back to us next time we meet as a council, where I think this resolution is going to be heard, if that's possible. Joe, Ken?
Oh, I mean, not in my head.
Yes, for the record.
Yes.
Great, okay, thank you. Great discussion, everyone. Any other comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor, please say aye. Oh, yep, go ahead.
Sorry, so I'm learning this as we speak, that some of the other counties are getting ready to start passing ordinances to stop 5G as well. I'm just getting texts from different members, so. It is out there, and we, this is how we make a difference. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, again, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
No.
Aye.
Motion carries with eight ayes, no by Mr. Richards.